But nobody could hear me, so I think I'm with you now.
Are you going to be video off this evening? Just so I know if we're getting started.
I think that's just the way I popped up. No, I'll turn the video on in a moment.
Okay.
Pull up the screen.
No rush.
There you go.
There we go. Awesome. Thank you. Okay, I think we're all here. So we can call to order the school committee meeting of June 25th, 2020. I welcome you all this evening. We are going to try again, since we have this new format, we are going to try to return to live public comments. I would ask any of the attendees if you are here for a public comment this evening. That we are going to try to keep public comments to three minutes per person. With a limit of about fifteen minutes tonight for public comment. We do have a full agenda, two really important items on there for us this evening. And that if you are here for public comment, that you would please raise your hand in the attendee session. And if so, we will allow you to speak. If you are attending this broadcast webinar and are just here to listen, we welcome you to stay and listen as well. I'll give people a few minutes to see if they can figure out how to raise their hand if they have something to say. If not, we shall move along to our student reports. Don't see any hands raised for public comments, so we will move along to Evan and Caroline. Now seniors in Winchester High School who have joined us again this evening. Congratulations on making it through your junior years and we are happy to see you back with us tonight. And they are here this evening, their student report, an end of year student report as it is. Good evening.
Thank you. Um, so obviously, school is out of session, so we don't have much of a report. But just to summarize the last few weeks, obviously, we had distance learning for the entire school year and we just finished that up with, I would say, the end of the year to me was going to school socially distanced to pick up our books, drop our drop off books, pick up a little bit of summer work, yearbook, stuff like that. Since then, we've been getting messages from teachers about classes for next year and summer coursework, stuff like that, as well as for us seniors, a little bit of guidance from the guidance department about how to apply to college during that process. And I think that pretty much sums up the rest of the year. If Carolyn wanted to add anything about distance learning, I would say it was a success. And if you guys have any questions about that, of course, we'd be happy to answer them. But that's all for me.
Yeah, I was just in college stuff at the end of the year. I got a couple emails from my guidance counselor. I had a call on my guidance counselor and obviously, like the book, then we got like junior awards and that stuff, so not really much going on. Definitely later work and now no more work, so no complaints.
Anybody have any questions for our student representatives? Karen?
I just had a question about Evan and Caroline. You had mentioned your experience with distance learning and could you just talk a little bit more about what you had experienced or what you had heard?
Yeah, so I would say for me, and I think for a lot of my friends, it varied completely class to class, teacher to teacher. And it just depended on what methods, it depends on what methods teachers decided to use, but that also largely depends on the course material. So some teachers who have been using Google Classroom all year were ready to go and that was a really easy transition. Some teachers struggled more to do that. So I think it definitely varied. I would say overall, definitely by the end of the year, it was a success. Even teachers that didn't have the best systems figured out how to use their systems and then we adjusted to that. So by the end of the year, I would say for me, it was clear what work had to be done to graduate, stuff like that. And after the beginning, there was a through period where our coursework was optional, I think, and then after that, that was largely transitional time, but I would say the past, the last month or so of school was a pretty smooth ride. We just got used to having our Zoom schedule and our coursework and stuff like that.
Yeah, it was a little slow going, but once teachers got to set up Google Classroom and that stuff, we had like little assignments to kind of keep us going and I never felt like it was overwhelming, at least for me. I know some of my other friends had like a lot more work, but I don't think any of them were definitely like, I couldn't get this done or anything, so I think the teachers did a good job like transitioning, working with what they have.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that.
Mr. Nixon?
Yeah, I have a question for both Evan and Caroline. Since you're rising seniors and I'm thinking of you and your peers who have colleges and universities on the horizon. SAT, I think, suspended their spring exam. Last I understand is the fall administration is still on. But I'm seeing more and more colleges and universities coming out to say they're not even going to require standardized testing for your graduating class, given the situation that we're in. Do you all have a sense of, well, let me put it either to you individually or maybe just speak for your peers as a whole. Do you feel like you, you've got a support network there, a good source of information in your guidance counselors in terms of what you either could or should be doing to gather information from colleges and universities? Does it kind of vary on a school by school basis? Do you feel supported or is this an anxious time for you?
I would say, I think the guidance council, the guidance department is definitely doing their best and they've reached out with some normal tips, but in terms of stuff like you said, the standardized testing policy, stuff like that, a lot of it completely depends on what individual schools are doing. So I think that well guidance is definitely doing their best to help us out. There is a lot more of individual research required from us. Same with if I've been attending a few like information sessions from schools online, so it's definitely a bit more required on us to do our own research, to schedule our own things than it would have been in past years. But not in a way that the guidance department is lacking, more in a way that the system just can't really support it.
Got it. Caroline, what about you?
It's a little bit anxious. I know they just added more seats to the SAT, I think in the fall or something. I, I'm taking that ACT personally, which they're supposed to have one in July, which I think will get canceled. They just canceled one that was supposed to be in June. So I think I'm just counting on test optional at this point. But yeah, it just varies from school to school. I get emails from so many colleges every day and everyone is updating saying they're going to test optional or test blind, so I think in the end, it's all going to work out because they're being really understanding of COVID and everything.
Well, part of our agenda tonight is we're going to hear an update from Dr. Evans and, well, as much as she can offer anyway, based on what the state is asking her and her team to do. I mean, three completely different scenarios for the fall and we're so quick to focus on kind of from bell to bell in the morning to when school is dismissed, but we've also begun talking about things like after school program and transportation and athletics. And we should just remind ourselves Winchester is frequently a host to standardized testing, right, for SATs and ACTs. So that's something I certainly know that Dr. Evans will keep on her radar, so we want to keep our students safe both during the school day and outside the school day when that opportunity should come. Well, thank you for sharing that with us.
Any other questions from the committee? I just want to thank you both for your engagement this past year and your regular attendance at the school committee meetings. For just an example of the information that you shared with us tonight, it's really great to hear directly from the students and you are obviously really in, in the mix and well connected to the student bodies. So hearing from you is really important to the school committee as we go forward and make choices. So we appreciate you being here. As always, you are welcome to stay. As Mr. Nixon alluded to, we will, we do have some initial guidance from the state on what we can possibly expect for the next school year that may be of interest to you, so please feel free to stick around with us this evening. But we certainly understand if you have other things to do on this lovely summer night too. So, thank you again. And I, I believe the next item on our agenda then would be school committee reorganization. It is typically the policy of the Winchester School Committee to reorganize our board following an election that happened on last Saturday. And I am honored and humbled to be reelected by the residents of Winchester for another term on school committee, but it does mean that my term here as chair has come to an end. And so I want to just take a minute to thank all of my fellow committee members for all their hard work over the past year and the administration and leadership team for your unending collaboration with the school committee. We may not always be on the same page, but we are always pleased to be welcomed by an open and honest communication and never feel that, always feel that your door is open to us too. So we appreciate that. And with that, I think I would like to turn over the presiding of this meeting to Dr. Evans.
Thank you. Thank you very much. It's always interesting to lead the efforts for the school committee reorganization because it usually results in some really awkward chair moving, like people moving their chairs, and here we're zooming, so whoever is the next chair doesn't have to move his chair or her chair, which is, which is fun. Before I open it up for nominations for school committee chair, I would be remiss if I didn't take a moment to acknowledge the exemplary leadership of Michelle and Brian as the vice chair and all the other members as that everybody has taken on additional responsibilities during the year related to normal business operations like our building projects, our union contract negotiations, other facilities issues where Mr. Nixon has done an amazing job leading that charge. And more than I can say tonight, but I think Michelle, what people don't understand is that the school committee role comes with a lot of responsibility to learn, to find out what's happening in other districts, to listen and listen and listen to lots of people with very valid opinions who want to share their thoughts. And so it's more than a full-time job to be a school committee person. And Michelle has done an exemplary job as chair and I just want to thank her for that as we open up nominations for the new chair. So the procedure, we only do this once a year, so just want to remind everyone. I will open it up to the five school committee members for nominations for chair. And then we will do a roll call vote. If there's more than one nomination, when we do the roll call vote, I'll ask each person to select one vote, vote for one person. And if we reach a majority of three or more, then that person will be the new chair. We turn it over to the new chair and the chair will then do the same procedure for the vice chair. So are there any questions before we start for members around the process? Okay, so I will, at this time, be pleased to open for nominations for school committee chair. And if you want to just raise your hand, I can, Chris?
I would be happy to nominate Brian Vinalia to be the chair of the school committee.
Okay, thank you very much. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none, we will have a roll call vote. If you answer I, you will indicate that you are in favor of Brian Vinalia being chair, may obviously you're against and you may abstain, although that makes our job really difficult. So I'm hoping we'll all have I's or a n's. So why don't we start with Michelle?
I would vote for Brian Vinalia for chair.
Okay, Brian?
I would vote for myself, thank you.
That's good. Xena?
Yes, definitely.
Great. Karen?
Yes.
Yes, and Chris, obviously, is a yes. All right, congratulations, Mr. Vinalia. You are now the chair and you can do the same thing for the vice chair. I see a lot of virtual clapping, so if we were all in a room together, we'd be clapping and thankful for your service. So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. I'm honored and excited and I have many things I'd love to say about the outgoing chair, Ms. Bergstrom, but I will reserve them for my chair report because I'm now chair. With that, I would like to open up nominations for vice chair. And what I would like to do is go around the table and ask each person if they have somebody they would like to nominate for vice chair. I will start in the order that our table is, would be laid out at the table. So I would start with Mr. Nixon. Do you have any nominations for vice chair?
Sure, I would be happy to nominate Karen as vice chair.
Ms. Marchand, do you have anybody you'd like to nominate for vice chair?
I would like to self nominate.
Excellent. Next, we would go to Michelle. Do you have anybody you'd like to nominate?
Not that has already been, not, that has not already been nominated.
Thank you. Ms. Bollinger, do you have anybody you'd like to nominate?
No, I'm not, not, as Michelle was saying, yes.
Okay, so the nominations are closed and seeing as we have two nominations for vice chair. This will require, Ms. Marchand and Ms. Bollinger, this will require a roll call vote. I will continue to go around the board table in the order that we did just there. So I'll start with Mr. Nixon. Mr. Nixon, do you vote selecting one of the two candidates? How do you vote?
I vote for Ms. Bollinger's for vice chair.
Okay, Ms. Marchand, how would you vote?
I'll vote for myself.
Thank you. Ms. Bergstrom, how would you vote?
I would vote for Ms. Bollinger's for chair.
Ms. Bollinger, how would you vote?
I will vote for myself.
I will vote for Ms. Bollinger's as well. That would make a total of four in favor of Ms. Bollinger's if I did my math correctly. Congratulations, Ms. Bollinger. Thank you, Xena. And I believe with that, you'll correct me, Dr. Evans, if I am correct that our procedure, process here is done?
It is.
Okay. So with that, I would like to move on to the reports and the discussion items. I would like to ask committee's indulgence to move on to item number B, the MSBA form review first, and then move back to the update on state reopening guidelines, if applicable. And I believe I would turn that over to Dr. Evans and Ms. Whittlemore, I believe, as far as MSB form review, Dr. Evans?
Sure. Bear with me, I'm just pulling up the documents now and so let me explain how this process works and what I think are the major points I'd like to be sure that I hear from school committee members on. As you know, the MSBA requires some preliminary documents at the, as part of the feasibility study phase for the Lynch School replacement renovation or addition, whatever the feasibility study determines it to be. Two of those are enrollment related and one is educational program related. The enrollment related forms of, which I have printed for you in your packet, are preliminary forms. A lot of the information is pre pulled from a variety of sources by the MSBA. And I, as I believe I communicated with you in an email, there were some major errors in the MSBA's enrollment data, particularly for one school year, but also in the, at the preschool level for a couple of years. I've communicated with the MSBA, they haven't made the correction yet. I will not sign and submit this until they've made the correction because obviously it has an impact on the MSBA's decision-making relative to the size of the school and enrollment drivers were one of the main reasons why we were placed into the feasibility study phase of this partnership. And so we want to be sure that it's accurate. So what I'd ask you to do is not pay a lot of attention to the enrollment information, which I didn't put in, was put in by the MSBA, but you can see that I've highlighted some areas of error and that I will certainly go through and make sure that's corrected. The second major piece of information is live births, which is, some of that is pre-populated from previous submissions or from the MSBA. Some I got from the state and some I got from the town clerk. And so I think these are fairly accurate and kind of interesting to look at. What I would point out as especially interesting around live births is, you know, they've been fairly consistent for the last couple of years hovering somewhere slightly below 200. But 200 live births five years later often translates into over 300 kindergarten students and so it'd be interesting to see what the correlation is that the MSBA sees between our kindergarten class sizes as we tend to have a lot of families move to town increasingly with students in upper grade levels because our school district as well regarded and has good results. So for those numbers were inputted by me, the building permits. I got that information from Brian Vinalia and the town engineer's office. And so you can see what those trends are. Brian also sent me the housing project descriptions and I've just transcribed the information that he put for the housing sales information is pre-populated by MSBA, that's not mine.
Clarify, that would be Brian Zekely, not Brian Vinalia?
Kelly, yes, Brian Zekely, thank you. The housing sales information, I don't know why they only have two years there. They didn't give me any room to add anymore, so that's not our information, that's the state. And then the baseline projection obviously is incorrect because of the error from 2018, 19, so we'll have to make sure that gets, that's gets fixed. So that's the first enrollment report. I don't know if anyone had any questions or concerns.
I just had a question on the on the building permit data, I believe it was. I think it was 2011 and 12 were in the, that were in the report or in the submission. So was that, were those two particular years just designated by the MSBA? Or I guess I was wondering why it was 2011, 12 as opposed to like 2018, 19?
Yeah, but these are all fill-ins on a, on the chart and the folks in the, in Town Hall gave me from 2010 through 2000, anticipated 2021. So those, I don't know why MSBA is asking for those, those particular years, but all of those are data points that were given to me by Town Hall.
So just to clarify, it's the MSBA that requested 2011 and 2012?
2010 through 2021, yep.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
All right, I guess I only saw 2011, 12. Okay, thank you.
Sure. Anything else on, about first forum questions? Okay, so going on to the second forum, so the second forum was general information about design enrollment, anticipated design enrollment, which we'll have to discuss tonight. I have a plug figure and I think I can justify it, but we should discuss that. That's an important plug figure. It asks whether we're going to include any grade reconfigurations as part of the feasibility study.
Judy, can you tell me what page you're on? I'm sorry, in the, in the packet?
I'm, I'm in the section, let's see, I'm not seeing page numbers. It's page 18 or so of the PDF. It says general information, what is the district's anticipated design enrollment? For the proposed project. It's interesting, they've misspelled design. To tell them on their form that's spelled wrong. Grade configuration. And then the third question is, is the district considering any redistricting as part of the feasibility study? So I have answered those with my best guesses, but these are three things that school committee members need to weigh in on, on those three questions. And again, I don't, I think this is not a, it gets written in blood somewhere once you submit this. This is our initial thinking before we do the feasibility study and before we have more information about other potential large-scale developments that might come in. Did I see a question? Karen? You muted, Karen, sorry.
I muted.
There you go.
Yes, it's telling me I'm muted now, so I'm confused. So I'm sorry, I misspoke earlier. I did not mean the building permits. I was referring to the housing sales, which I can't see which page this.
Right.
And that's where it's only 2011 and 12.
I don't know why. They, and they didn't give me any blanks to fill in any additional information. So when I follow up on the enrollment, I'll ask them, did, did your form mean to have other? They pull that data from state sales data in any case through real estate records, and so I'm not sure why there are only two years there.
Okay, yes, I guess I wasn't sure why there were only two years and why they were just 2011 and 2012.
I have no idea, but I'll try to follow up and ask them.
Can I just interject with a point of information? Not to throw a wrench in this, Judy. I, I think I'm seeing now the enrollment questionnaire that you sent the committee yesterday at 1:28 PM, which was a PDF, but it was in color. Appears to me to be different from the document that's attached to the full packet as a PDF that Frida sent out. So if I'm reading that right, the PDF, let me pull it up here, I have so many documents, forgive me. I think the document you sent out yesterday had a suggested, if you added up the classrooms, suggested a design enrollment of 640. But the PDF that I was just looking at was saying 660.
This says 580.
We're, we're still looking at the enrollment.
Yeah, I'm looking at the chart, that's right, the enrollment question. There, you're right, Michelle, there's another document that says 580, but I'm looking at the questionnaire and I just lost it, so I gotta pull it up again and I don't know if other school committee members have access to it quickly here. I'm going to try to pull it up again. So I'm looking through, looks like this is a 35-page PDF for tonight. And when I get to, if I scroll down and I get to the questionnaire, there we go. If I get to, for instance, Judy, like under section two, we, there was a section added, it was a section seven, so following class size guidelines, we talked about design enrollment. So that's not there.
Yeah, Frida used a previous PDF to the one I sent, I sent you yesterday, so you should not read. So when we, we haven't discussed the questionnaire yet, but when we get there, if people want to pull up the one I sent, this is the, this was an earlier version before I get feedback from school.
Okay, okay, so I just want to be sure we know what information we're using for the conversation. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so going back to, so the difference between the question, educational questionnaire, it's not an online form the way the other is. The other, this is a result of an online forum that gets. form that gets printed, so that's why this one looks a little funky for us to work through. So, let me just go through the rest of the enrollment questionnaire and then we can go back to the general information. Michelle?
I just want to clarify then, so the design enrollment that we are intending to work from as we go through these is 580?
So, that's the question that I think we need to spend the most time on tonight, because there is an applied correlation between how many classrooms we say we need and what the anticipated design enrollment is. The one question I have is, does, should that include the preschool in part of their design enrollment? It doesn't say on the form that it's K-12 design enrollment. So, I need to ask them whether it should be our K-2, five classrooms, which will be at about 500 in the fall, or is it our preschool classrooms, when all the preschoolers are there, adds about 100 students or 90 students?
I can clarify, I can clarify that for you Judy, if you like. Flansburgh was just sharing with us, I don't know, maybe six or seven weeks ago, that that pre, so pre-K spaces are considered eligible for the building, but they're not reimbursable and pre-K kids do not count towards the design enrollment. So, in other words, you're allowed to put the pre-K spaces in, but they wouldn't drive, for instance, a larger cafeteria or a larger gymnasium, the kinds of assembly spaces that the K-5 kids use, although in the case of Lynch, it's a little funky because our pre-K kids do use the gym, but they eat in their classroom, I think. So, that's my understanding is, you're allowed to do pre-K on your own nickel and it doesn't count towards the design enrollment.
Yeah, well, that's good to know, because it doesn't make it clear here in the question. So, Michelle's question is, what is our design enrollment going to be for Lynch? So, the master plan suggests that it's somewhere in the range of 540. And I will make a case when we get to the enrollment questionnaire that I think it should be significantly higher, given that we have, we'll have over 500 K-5 students there in the fall. In five years from now, we're likely to have more than 40 additional students based on the building projects in that area of town, that will have limited capacity to redistrict before then and move some of the Lynch students out. However, the difficulty is, when you multiply the number of core classrooms by our average class size, it's not always an easy number of classrooms, they don't all fit neatly into four or five classrooms. Sometimes, your numbers require you to have five smaller classrooms, which is the case now, in the fall, we'll have a couple of grade levels at five and some at four. In the last few years, we've had, frequently have had kindergartens at five, and I was fearful that some of those kindergartens would turn into six. And so, the, the other questionnaire doesn't speak so specifically and directly to anticipated design enrollment. So, my best guess is, I think we should aim for about 580 and add, so next fall, we'll have 26 classrooms, K-6 at Lynch School. And I think at the end of the project, we should add, in my opinion, up to 32 or 33 classrooms in total by 2025. If we ask for fewer classrooms, I'm fearful that we will quickly run out of space at Lynch. And so, that's a decision that the school committee needs to give me some feedback on. So, whatever the design enrollment is here, doesn't necessarily correlate to how many classrooms we're adding, because we don't have even class sizes that would make it always easy for us to meet the needs of the students that I anticipate we'll have. So, I guess before we move on then, grade reconfiguration. From previous conversations, I believe that we are not planning to reconfigure the grades at Lynch School or at the elementary level, partially because we have no space to do so, even if we wanted to. As part of the master plan, you might remember, we had extensive discussions about future configurations that could include a dedicated grade six building, a K-8 schools, K-6 schools, and not having a middle school. And I think we settled in the master plan that we like our small-sized elementary schools of K-5 students primarily. And so, I'm assuming that's what we're going to maintain. Does anyone have a different recollection or want to make a case for seeking to include any grade reconfiguration as part of the feasibility study? Okay. And the last question is, is the district considering any redistricting as part of the feasibility study? I think we've had discussions about the need for redistricting, primarily because the growth in town is in the area where we have limited capacity to service those students, and that some of the projects that are expected to come online, as you saw in the previous page in 2022, many in 2022, will add students at schools where there is no space for them. So, we will likely need to redistrict. However, I don't believe there'll be space at the other schools either, and that's why I've talked repeatedly about using Parkhurst as some swing space until Lynch has been completed. So, what I've said here is, all five elementary schools are over capacity, but large-scale housing projects are expected to add 400-plus units before the project is completed. This is going to lead to severe overcrowding at some schools based on anticipated resulting enrollment increases, redistricting will be needed to address this. Just want to be sure this reflects what the committee's feeling is about redistricting.
Any questions about this?
Okay, so.
See a question from Mr. Nixon.
I, I'm totally on board with sort of Judy's opening statement and with the close, which is basically, we would typically assume we'd redistrict associated with the project, but the comment in between that we don't see, and I may have misheard you Judy, so I apologize if I did, if you don't envision other school projects opening before we get to Lynch, then that's, I guess, where I'd like to go to pretty quickly, because the master plan says to accommodate growth in our district at the K-5 level, there are three objectives over the next 10 years. It's a new Lynch that grows by 100 to 120 students, it's a new Morocco that grows by 100 to 120, and it's the final expansion of VO that picks up an additional 100 students. So, it's not so much pick one or the other, or pick two out of three, the recommendation was you do all three and then those schools wind up similarly sized. As exciting as it is that we're on the rails now with MSBA, with Lynch, you know, if we do the math, the new Lynch opening in the fall of 2025 means it's basically eight, it's more than eight years after the master plan was approved. That's a long time to wait to bring on much-needed space. So, the VO project, and then because we have said that Morocco is going to have to wait until Lynch is complete, sort of by process of elimination suggests we need to look at finishing the VO school. And that project, as proposed, brings online five classrooms and 100 kids for frankly, not a lot of money. So, that's, I think, an important discussion to have in the context of Lynch when we talk about design enrollment.
Okay, so I think, you know, that certainly as, as we look at all options related to meeting space needs, the committee will have to consider Parkhurst and how Parkhurst could be used, how VO could be added to, and when Morocco is going to start rebuilding process as well, and what the order of those will be. So, Mr. Nixon, did I, did I hear you say that you thought we'd add 100 students so that, so that you think the design enrollment might be 600 and not 580?
So, are we talking about VO?
No, like you said, I thought I heard you say Lynch, Morocco, and VO would each add capacity for an additional 100 students.
So, the, the master plan summary says the goal should be a new Lynch, again, because of the renewal and replacement costs that we face, but one that accommodates between 100 to 120 additional students. And then, the same thing at Morocco, replace Morocco because of the age and condition of the building, and while you're at it, expand that school to pick up an additional 100 to 120 students. And then, the third project is VO, which only picks up 100 because that expansion option is five classrooms plus a little bit of specialist space. I mean, you could make it six if you wanted to, but then you wouldn't have some of that support space that typically goes with it.
So, what, so what do you think the design enrollment should be then for Lynch in this first question on general information?
So, I appreciate the question. So, I'm, I have a couple of, two or three things informing me on this. We have said to the MSBA now for three years in a row that we need a new Lynch of between 500 and 560 students. And then, I got up in front of town meeting on behalf of everybody in on this call right now, a couple of weeks ago, and said the same thing. I believe, I believe Judy, you're right on the money that a Lynch of, let's say, 540, 560 design capacity does not by itself accommodate the growth that we envisioned over the 10 years that are encompassed by our facilities master plan. I think the committee is aware that we, originally in the summer of 17, we projected that the lion's share of the growth was going to come in the first five years with a little bit following up in the second five years. I'm thankful, I hope the rest of you are, that it hasn't happened that way. You know, the major project off Holton Street, that kind of fizzled, although it's been purchased by Bain Capital. And in the call that, that Judy and Ellen and I had with Brian Zekely last month, I think we talked about it at a recent meeting, although the mega, mega project hasn't happened, there are some pretty significant projects out there, like River Street, you know, you got the Cambridge Street project and some smaller scale stuff. And at the end of the day, it still adds up to the kind of growth that we originally projected in the master plan, and it was validated by the Donahue Institute. And so, based on that growth that we said we would have, which it still looks like we will have, although maybe in the latter half of the decade instead of the first half, but it's coming, we would need to add between 100 and 120 additional design capacity at Lynch and Morocco, and then the 100 at VO. So, I believe that coming in, I mean, my head was at 540 to 560, but as I shared offline with the superintendent, I think it's really credible, and I like that one of the documents Judy has shared with us tonight discusses a design enrollment of 580. I would love to see us go after a sixth kindergarten classroom as an ask with the MSBA, because kindergartens are great when you need them, it's great to have them, and if you don't need it, you can always use it for first grade, you can also use it for pre-K in terms of, you know, space and accommodation, because they require some special plumbing fixtures and so forth. At the end of the day, though, the MSBA is going to go through its own exercise, they're going to ask a lot of tough questions, they're just going to look at development that's happening, they're going to look at prospective development, and then they're going to come up with a number. So, I've been through this rodeo with them before, they are not likely to come right at the same number that we have, but through all of our years of our hard work and our diligence, and this goes back many, many years, we've really built up, I think, a very strong reputation with the MSBA. We say what we mean, we mean what we say. Michelle and Judy may remember, we got great feedback on our most recent master plan, no different than the one that came before it, very detailed, very thorough, and it was our good fortune, for me anyway, I didn't know it was the case at the time, to learn that the Donahue Institute actually contracts directly with the MSBA as well. So, they, they sort of ate that up and appreciated the validation. So, I would, I'm very comfortable going in with an ask of 580, but with the understanding that the MSBA is going to go through their process. And I'm going to use my hands here and say, you know, we're going to be a little bit apart, but the closer we are together when they finish their process, the better that is for us in terms of sort of building that trusting working relationship. If they go through their process and we submit it 640 or 660, if we're really miles apart, that's going to be a difficult conversation to have. And I only mentioned the VO project because if, if, let me put it this way, it would, if our choice was to add five classrooms at VO or Lynch, we can have them faster at VO by up to two years and for a quarter of a million dollars less. Even with state reimbursement, it is more expensive to build those five classrooms at Lynch than it is at VO. So, VO, and it's maybe a difficult conversation to have here as the, you know, clock is reaching the 11th hour, but I would remind the committee and anyone watching tonight that the VO expansion was never intended as sort of a safety net, right, a parachute, a backup plan. VO, we actually put precious resources into the building to facilitate that build-out. So, the corridors are there, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing chases are there, the electrical panels are sized, the bathrooms are there. It is a, air quotes, easy project to pull off, all of the support spaces there. Unfortunately, that's not the case with the new Lynch. So, if you wanted to add the 6,200 square feet at VO, you could build it and it would be there for you to use. We cannot add 60, you can't make the new Lynch 6,200 square feet bigger and actually get 6,200 square feet. And if, if that's difficult for people to wrap their head around, it's because you've got to have corridors to access the space, you've got to add or increase the size of fire stairs and vestibules, you've got to upsize mechanical, electrical spaces. And we're talking about 100 additional occupants, so what that does is, by the building code, it incrementally means the cafeteria is bigger, the gymnasium is bigger, which it should be, by the way. I mean, if we were, if we said we wanted to have an additional 100 kids at Lynch, 100 more than what we've been saying. It makes everything bigger. And so, in fact, to get that net 6,200 square feet, you've got to make the building bigger by almost 10,000 square feet. So, it's a very, it's a very costly exercise, the 40% reimbursement's great, but you're sort of, you've got to add that extra 50%, it's called the net-to-growth multiplier by programmers and, you know, nerdy architects. And of course, we've got the extra two years of escalation. So, if that space we wanted to pull off, I was doing some math, the master plan says the VO expansion with a couple of years of escalation was a $3.4 million project, that's project cost, not construction. If we roll in a couple of years of escalation, it comes in a little over $3.5 million for five classrooms plus support space. So, I mean, I could go on and on, but I, I do think it's important we come back and consider VO, and if and when we do that, it's no failing of us, it's actually an important project for us to act on someday. We built VO with two expansion options, if you will. We did the first one after three years, and if we were to act on the third floor expansion, you know, we could have it 10 years, we could have it open 10 years after the building first opened.
May I just ask a clarifying question to you? It sounds like you're in agreement with Dr. Evans' design capacity of 580 for Lynch, is that correct?
I am, yeah.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
So, moving on, so I think.
I thought I saw another question, but maybe it's.
I was, I was going to ask Mr. Nixon if, I appreciate his advocacy for VO, but I was curious if he was, if he, the same question you asked.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, the next few pages of this form are pre-populated, out-of-district students, private school students, for some reason, they just collected it for one year 2018, that's their data. And then, they give me an incredibly small little rectangle to put in information about special education, which I have, and pointed out that industry programs have been growing rapidly. One of the things that we'll look at on our educational program forum is that currently the district program for students, and Pam can jump in on any of these if I am misspeaking, for students with autism spectrum disorder is likely in need of expansion as our, our overall population grows, our special education population grows, as well as the integrated preschool. And Pam has been speaking for some time about the need for a dedicated classroom for students who are medically fragile or have pretty intense needs, pre-KK district-wide, which we, some of those students are in out-of-district placements or not able to be integrated. And so, even if we just keep the same number of preschool classrooms, which we currently have, I think, four full-day, two half-day, and don't expand that to, to meet community demand, we're likely to need two additional classrooms at some point for that specialized program. So, that's reflected in the, in the other, in the program questionnaire. There are questions about pre-K and K programs, how many we have, how many are we paying tuition, those sorts of things. If anyone has any questions about any of those, I'd be happy to answer those. So, is there anything else on enrollment that jumped out at anybody that you had a question about or a concern or that needs additions? Okay, seeing no.
Dr. Evans, may I ask, are you, are you seeking any input on any details on this or just general review and approval of it, even though it's not a vote, but just sort of?
I mean, I think anytime we submit major forms to the MSBA, I like to have several other eyes on it. And so, it's good to have school committee members who may not. may not be as close to some of these issues as we are. And if we're not clear, that's always helpful, or if there's something missing. A lot of these are just, you know, forms that you're completing a small square on and it's easy to overlook some things. So I just wanted another set of eyes. The next one, with the educational program questionnaire is more in narrative, and that's probably going to require more feedback. But I see Karen's hand up.
Yes, so I guess my question is just an amalgam of the educational profile questionnaire and then this enrollment data. So I guess in the enrollment data, it says that the predicted enrollment for the new Lynch is 580. But then in the enrollment questionnaire, when there's a chart, a table listing the room types and the core academic spaces. And I guess when I go through the numbers there, assuming that each of the classrooms listed is for an average of 20 students, it looks like it's about 640 students. So do these have to tie?
Yeah, no, I think that's a great question. So we should, we should look at how many rooms we're currently using, and then my proposal for how many rooms I think we'll need. And where we might need adjustment is some places where I've got a six, we might want to have a five. I don't think we should have any fours, because we pretty consistently at Lynch have needed five class sections at various grade levels. And so, you know, Mr. Nixon made a case for if we're going to have a six anywhere, it should be in kindergarten, because that's kind of specialized space and it's nice to have that, whereas you have more flexibility to move the other grade levels around. So when we get to that, but I, there's no, there's no formula on here that says 20 is the target average class size. In fact, many, most of our classes are below 20, some are 17 or 18. And you can see if you do, if you do the same math with a 17 or an 18, you get closer to, multiplying the, I don't know, what do I have, 33 classrooms here? You know, it gets closer to the 600 mark. So, but I'm open, that's why, that's why I asked, you know, that we discussed that tonight and have feedback. So, but the other important piece for the educational program, educational profile questionnaire is have I adequately described what the committee believes are the current use of spaces and our educational use of spaces in the future and in relation to proposed teaching methodologies? And Michelle and I had discussed this. Jenna and Emma reviewed it and thought it accurately reflected the direction that the district was going. And so I just want to make sure I haven't forgotten anything that's important to the committee in this, this first go-round questionnaire. Just want to remind everybody that, and Chris will probably expand on this. When we contract with an architect to try to do the initial design, much like when we were adding to McCall, there's a major effort to look at the educational needs of the school, engage parents and teachers and perhaps students in that conversation, and be sure that any design is reflective of what our aspirations are and what our realities are. And so this is just an overview for the MSBA, but the real work comes when you meet with the designer and articulate what your vision is and what your needs are. Am I accurately capturing that, Chris?
Yeah, I, I think you did. I might just make a clarification that there's sort of, there's two, there's two areas that we will wind up working with the MSBA on when it comes to actual utilization of classrooms. So we have as a district, because we, the school committee, have class size guidelines that are, some might say, pretty conservative. There are many other districts with more kids in a classroom. That's kind of a bedrock value of ours and we hold to that. So how many kids per class is important? I, the also, the other important thing to remember is just physically, physically, how big are classrooms? I want to remind the committee that most of the classrooms at Lynch are 870 square feet. That is well below the MSBA standard class size template. And our average classroom size, it gets, it gets slued a little bit, because as Judy points out in the documents, we have some old junior high school spaces like Home Ec and Shop, and those are really big. But even when you average all that in, our average class size at Lynch is, is below 1,000 square feet. So whatever we settle on with the MSBA, we can be sure that our classes themselves are going to be more consistently sized, and they're going to be bigger than the classes that we have today, which of course, in the end of the day, makes it easier to put an extra couple of bodies in there if we have to in a pinch. So I just want to, I just want to be clear, there are class size guidelines, but then there's just the physical reality of space. We can, we can, we can expect that we're going to have bigger classrooms in this project.
So that was-
Ms. Marshant has been waiting patiently, Ms. Marshant?
Judy, I was wondering why the decision was made to not seek an auditorium? I don't know what a nadatorium is, but why not have a separate space for an auditorium? Just given the potential for community programming, et cetera.
Yeah, well, Chris could probably speak to that too, but my impression from having reviewed elementary projects is, is just like a swimming pool, which is an auditorium. The MSBA is not likely to agree to fund an auditorium. And especially in a district where we already have one elementary school with a big auditorium, the middle school has a big auditorium, and the high school has an auditorium. It's unlikely that they would approve that as part of the project. But what I would say is, it's really important to me to have performance spaces in the school. So often you can create a really good performance space in the cafeteria. You can create performance spaces in the music rooms. You can create large group meeting spaces that have raised portions of the room where students could do smaller presentations to, you know, 100 people, something like that. So, no, I think I'm really thinking that not theatrical performance stage of space, but certainly it's highly likely that the cafeteria would have a stage in it, just like it does now. Is that right, Chris?
Well, I would just, I would add as an example, the VO project, which was an MSBA project. What we did, Xena, is we doubled up, so the gymnasium is really the auditorium, so there's a stage there. You've got the curtains and so forth, and the MSBA supported that, including the storage space for the stage and the space adjustments that needed to be made, as well as some acoustic panels and so forth in the space. So it's not like they, not like they won't permit you to have an assembly space for a performance, but it's not a separate space.
Ms. Marshant, does that answer your question? Do you have a follow-up?
It's, I would like to follow up with Judy. If, if, what I'm more, more talking about is the seating, so that we don't have custodial issues, and we don't have to borrow chairs. It's not a flat seating arrangement, that it's more of a flowing, so that people can have a better view of the audience. It's, it's not about the stage space that I'm concerned about, it's more of the seating and that kind of spacing for presentations, for PD, for all of that.
Yeah, it's highly unlikely they would approve permanent seating because this, because the space needs to be flexible for other people to use it for a variety of purposes. That's a lot of square foot footage that you lose in an auditorium that's not easily adaptable for other purposes. You might remember that the high school ran into some issues because there are two levels at the high school in the auditorium, and it was meant for, there's a large kind of landing between the two levels. And the architect tells me that they designed it that way in order to facilitate the use of the rear portion as a sort of smaller presentation space, the rear portion of the auditorium. And it turned out, turns out to be problematic, because then you don't have good sight lines from some of those seats to the main stage because of where the control for the lighting and the sound is. And so sometimes when you try to do too many things in one space, it doesn't work out well. But in this case, I can't recall any elementary school that I know of that's had an auditorium put in a permanent seating, you know. So, do you have any other questions, Xena, on this before we move on? Okay.
Ms. Bergstrom, I believe, had a question as well.
So when we are looking at the core academic spaces, it goes back to something that Mr. Nixon was talking about. We are not only adding, we would not only be adding classroom spaces at a new Lynch, but larger classroom spaces as well. I noticed that we have doubled the number of special education classrooms or spaces. Do we expect those to be classroom spaces if we are looking to expand the STE program? Or are those a different kind of space that we're talking about when we look at some of these spaces?
Yeah, so I think this probably is a good time just to go through the sections here and point out that they had some errors in the square footage and the years built that we'll have them address in section one. Michelle is referring to section two, which talks about, here are all the current classes that we have, the number of sections in core academic spaces. And we called and confirmed with the MSBA that what they're looking for here is not what we would identify as a core academic space versus one that's been used, that's been used as a core academic space that was converted from something else. They just basically want to know, how many first grades do you currently have? Are they in a classroom? If it's in a library or a subdivided room, they want to know that. But if it's in its own room, they consider it a core academic space, even if it wasn't designed for that purpose. So there's a chart that lists the current number of rooms and spaces. Always hard to capture, you know, what is a room? Some rooms are very small and some are full-size classroom spaces. So the program description, the questionnaire talks about core spaces, specialty spaces, and then non-traditional spaces. And in the non-traditional space section, I pointed out the community use of the facility, because I think that's important for the MSBA to know that the building has been well-maintained, but it is extremely well-used. All weekend by the Chinese-American Network, the rec department, our extended year program, et cetera. And that almost every space in the building has been converted for student use, leaving no conference rooms or meeting rooms or small group spaces. In fact, the only conference space in the whole building is in the computer server head-end space with the servers whoring behind you and kind of some, a couple of tables put in there. So those non-traditional spaces are well-used but need to change. So if you go to, you go past kind of our current teaching methodology into the proposed statement of interest, which is on page six of that questionnaire, but probably 28 or so in your packet. We have identified here how many rooms of each type I think we need, and we still need to, you know, reach a final number and some consensus on that. And then there are specialized spaces. So Michelle was asking about, why would we increase the special education space? Couple of reasons. One is that the new school buildings, you're required to spread the special education space throughout the building and not consolidate it in any one section of the building. And so if you go to the high school or you go to VO, the special education support spaces or other specialized support spaces are sprinkled throughout the building and often it's a small room for, say, six to eight students and a teacher. And while we are a fully inclusive district where all students, including students that are specialized district-wide programs are assigned to regular classrooms and in there for part of the day, there are some things that require small group of students or require spaces for testing for special education or require spaces for students to de-escalate or just be in a place other than their classroom with the teacher for a variety of reasons. And so when I identified how many special education spaces, I did say that we needed to dramatically increase it, but none of these are necessarily full classrooms, except for those involved in the specialized program. And so we would have, you know, as we go to the, through the design process, we'd have to identify, you know, how many counseling spaces we need, how many spaces for school psychologists to do testing, how many small meeting groups for IP meetings or teacher collaboration, et cetera. And so how you, do you call those administrative, do you call them special education? We also have a very large number of students at Lynch who speak English, has a second language, and receive services. Most of those are full in, some are not, depending on the intensity of need, et cetera. So, so to answer your question, Michelle, it's my best guess as to the number of spaces we need, but that will come in the design. And this is not a square footage chart, it's just sort of an overall, where are you going to put your efforts? The other thing that you can see is I've asked for one art room. I can, and I can make a case for a second art room in a school of, you know, 580 or 600, and/or a kiln room. I've got two music rooms and then one practice room for percussion, because you need a different kind of sound control there. And it may be that we end up with one music room, because that's what the MSBA thinks we need. I've got also one gymnasium, but I'd love to see an adaptive PE space adjacent to the gymnasium, because that would allow us a smaller space for students to work directly with the physical education teachers who aren't able to, for a variety of reasons, participate in regular PE. But that would be a room that could be well-used. And then I've got the cafeteria and teacher lunchroom, which we don't have now. The previous kitchen is now being used as an art room. The nurse's office, medical suite, guidance, and then small rooms for English learner and reading support for the teachers to have as a home base and to keep their materials and perhaps to sometimes work with small groups of students. And then I think what many districts are doing now is, instead of a media center that is a library, they're connecting a technology room next to a media center, so there's, there's kind of a seamless flow back and forth. Sometimes the technology space has video production capacity. Sometimes it has, it's more of a maker space. We'll have to talk with the community and the school committee and see what we want that to look like. So the main thing that I'm trying to determine tonight is, on page six of this, how many classrooms for core classrooms? And have I captured all of the spaces that you think are important for us to capture on our initial ask?
Any, any questions regarding this? Mr. Nixon, and then first, if that's okay?
This is a perfect opportunity for me to apologize to the committee, because tonight I have to celebrate, I get to celebrate both a silver anniversary and a 50th birthday upstairs, and I am a key part of making dinner and the cake. So I'm going to have to excuse myself here in a moment from the committee, and I apologize for that. I want to just, I want to briefly thank Judy and Ellen for all the hard work that's gone into this. It's a tremendous amount of information to capture, and then you put it in a form, then you've got to, you know, use a lot of words to explain, like, what do we mean when we say design enrollment, and where does that come from? So I think they've done a great job. My sort of parting thoughts are, to Karen's earlier point, I would feel more comfortable if the numbers on the chart tie back to the 580. To get there, we're looking at a class count, classroom count of 29. I would say, I throw it out to the committee, you guys should talk to the superintendent about this. I think if we went for six kindergartens and we had five classrooms for grades one through three, and we step back to four rooms for grades four through five is one way to get there. And of course, we understand they're all fungible, right? So in any given year, the superintendent and the principals make decisions about shifting between grades three and four and so forth. So that's just a suggestion about how we might get there. I think I would certainly be more comfortable if the chart either ties to or gets closer to the 580. I think we can support the 580, even though it's a little more than what we said in the master plan, because we have a little more information today than we have in the master plan. And I think especially, even if it's as simple as saying, we said 540 to 560, but you know what, we really, really, really would appreciate an extra kindergarten classroom. That is a strong leg to be standing on, and we can make many arguments why it would be helpful, especially at a new Lynch where we seek to bring back the pre-K program. So that's a room that you could swing one way to first grade, and you could swing it back to pre-K. It really could serve three different uses, which I think would be very helpful. So Brian, Judy, others, I apologize, I got to run.
Thank you.
The anniversary.
Thank you very much. All right, see you, guys.
Ms. Bollinger, I believe, had a question as well, unless, Dr. Evans, you want to respond to anything? Or are you okay with just moving on to a question?
Let's move on to the question, and I, what I really need is the final numbers here, because it's turned in on the 30th. So Karen, what was your, do you have a question?
You're muted, Karen.
There you go.
She still says I'm unmuted. So I guess my only question with regard to, I understand we need to get back to the number of classrooms, but I guess with the number of common spaces or specialist spaces, will, I guess, depending on the number of classrooms that we decide upon, will the number of common spaces- will the number of common spaces and specialist spaces be able to support that number? I was just
Yeah, so I so I think what you're asking is if depending on how many classrooms we put in, are we sure that we're going to have enough sort of small group meeting spaces or large group meeting spaces that are adjacent to that grade level so that, you know, we can accommodate that? I think the MSBA has kind of a formula for that. Is that what you're asking?
But yes, that. But I guess also, even like with the cafeteria, will the cafeteria be able to support a larger population of students if we choose to go that direction? Or and same with the gym, gymnasium, et cetera.
Right, right.
Trying to make sure.
Yeah, yeah, no, I think I think those are good questions. And again, I think there's a formula based on the overall capacity and the kinds of students there. The there are some specialized spaces at Lynch that'll be required that aren't always necessarily in every elementary school because of the preschool program and the and the autism spectrum disorder program. And that is an increased need for occupational therapy space. And and ancillary services like more speech and language pathologists, particularly for preschool students. More school psychologists. So some of the additional specialized space that you talk about comes along with the specialized programs in need for the related service providers to support them. And so but the size of the cafeteria and the auditorium is easily expanded or contracted, depending on, you know, the absolute enrollment in the school. Where I'm really struggling is whether we only are going to ask for three more classrooms than we have next year. I would actually have created twenty seven classrooms at Lynch if I'd had the space. Much like Lincoln, I would have added another classroom. Because there there's one grade level that's kind of could be concerning to me, you know, it's that we have no summer enrollment yet, and we're already, you know, at capacity in some of the some of the classrooms that are, you know, teetering on twenty twos. Which is not large compared to some other districts. But I think it's important to remember that we have very, very few students in out of district placements compared to most districts our size. That we're a full inclusion district. We have a lot of co teaching. And I think we do a great job. As evidenced by, you know, the graduation rate of students with disabilities at the high school. The M C A S results. We do a great job meeting the needs of students with disabilities in the district. Our eight eight hundred plus students with disabilities. But if we we would not be able to do that if we have significantly larger class sizes. And so I'm always kind of wrestling with how many sections do we need at Lynch? I would also point out that a third of the students at Lynch are designated as high need students for a variety of reasons, either English language learners, socioeconomic status or disability. And we just want to make sure that we ask for the right number of classrooms. So with current need at twenty six, Chris suggests we add, we ask for three additional classrooms. I think we should ask for five additional classrooms or six additional classrooms and see what the MSBA says. If we need to pull back on the design because it's too expensive or we have different understanding of what our enrollment needs two years from now, that is that's where we'll land. But I have trouble putting any fours on here. Especially if we know that we have fives now in terms of five sections. So Michelle, feedback on that? I'm really struggling with this a bit, and I I understand perfectly understand both points of view on it. So.
Ms. Bergstrom, you're muted.
I guess the only part I'm struggling with reconcile the difference then between the five eighty design enrollment and the twenty and the thirty three classrooms. How many students per classroom? I was trying to, I didn't do my math fast enough, but I was trying to figure out how many students per classroom that would give us, and if that still would fit within our class size guidelines. The the twenty nine per classroom, I know I can see where Mr. Nixon arrived at that at twenty students per class. That puts us right at five eighty. So I guess my question is, would we need to alter our design enrollment number that came earlier in the document if we're going to choose the thirty three classrooms here? Or does the thirty three classrooms still fall within our classroom size guideline?
And Ms. Bergstrom, if I may follow up only because I did do the math. And at district wide, we average about nineteen students per class, not the twenty that would be in the middle of our guidelines. And so that would be thirty and a half classrooms. And since you can't have a half a classroom, I would say that would be thirty one classrooms. But sorry, I interrupted Dr. Evans.
My point, and I I understand, I think, but I think we have a lot of classes, especially K to two that are more like seventeen or eighteen recent recently. And part of that is it's just hard to divide the number of kids we have into we often go to a fourth classroom when we could fit them into three, but they'll be at twenty three or twenty four. And it's just we because of our inclusion model, we think that's too many. So so, you know, maybe there's a compromise to be made here, and we go to thirty or thirty one for our initial ask. And see what MSBA says. If we ask for twenty nine, we'll never get more than twenty nine. And it may well be that we need thirty three or thirty two five years from now, and we'll be kicking ourselves. So I don't see any harm in making a case that our class sizes may be slightly smaller, but that we're a full inclusion district and in a school that's got some some high need students and that we are aiming for eighteen as as a class size average and not twenty. And that would put us at thirty one or thirty two.
And I guess that
Ms. Bergstrom, do you have a follow? Yes.
Yeah, that's my follow up. Does the will the MSBA respect our class size guidelines and respect the class sizes that we're looking for? I think I think we have also a history, as Mr. Nixon said, we have a history with the MSBA of being really clear about our numbers and having good data to support them. But I also recall that in our high school project, we used some of that good data to then actually justify to the MSBA to be able to build a slightly larger high school than MSBA even thought that we perhaps needed to build. And now that high school has now outgrown itself from even what we and the MSBA had initially predicted. So I think we also have some good history behind us to say that yes, we actually are still growing, and we do need perhaps larger numbers, larger particularly in an elementary school where it's not as flexible even as the high school spaces. We can sort of make it work in the high school because of the way high schools operate. But in elementary schools where we're tied to specific grades and grade levels and moving students. I can see where we might want to try to justify a little bit larger school than we had initially predicted based on the data that's sitting in front of us that you just mentioned.
Right. So so am I? So I'm looking for some consensus, Brian. Do you have any suggestions for modification to any of the? I have six classrooms projected at K one and two, because those tend to have lower class sizes and five at four, five and six. I mean, I'm sorry, four and five.
I would recommend that in order to be consistent between the two documents, they they align, and I think that using eighteen or nineteen students per classroom is a reasonable way to go because that's where we're trying to be. Nineteen is what we actually are at. So nineteen gives you thirty one. Thirty one, I believe, would be five additional classes if I'm five. Is that Mike? Is it five over what we currently have?
Yes.
That that would be by my personal thoughts, but obviously the committee as a whole.
I would concur.
Okay, so maybe I make the I go six, six, five, five, five. That's fifteen, twenty, twenty one. Just so just two. So take one away. Does that give the right number? Let me just double check here.
I'm sorry, could you just clarify what you mean by six, six?
Six kindergarten rooms. And I think in order to get to thirty one, we're going to have to do six kindergarten rooms and five everywhere else.
I think that that makes sense based on the numbers that we have in our projections, and it ties everything together.
Okay, all right. We'll go. We'll go with that if everybody feels comfortable. Xena, do you feel comfortable? Okay.
And so does that bring us to five hundred eighty?
It aligns with five hundred eighty, yes. If we have an average class size of eighteen or nineteen, yes.
And that's thirty one classrooms. Okay.
That's thirty one classrooms. Thirty one core classrooms.
I think unless I'm mistaken, are there any more questions on this? Or is this all that you needed from us tonight, aside from explaining it all to us? Are we
Yeah, no, that's all. I'm sorry. Yeah, thank you, Brian. If if there's anything else on any of the community engagement, I got some some feedback on that. And that I did include in the in the most recent draft and then explanation of specialty spaces and core classroom spaces and teaching methodology. If you have any other comments, send them my way, but I'd like to to submit this on Monday.
Perfect. Thank you so much. Thank you so much for going through this. This is very helpful. It was very detailed, and I appreciate the amount of work that you put in to get this together for us. And thank you.
You're welcome.
With that, I'd like to move back to report and discussion item number A, which is the update regarding the reopening guidelines, if applicable. As the committee is aware, the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley, released initial fall reopening guidance today at ten AM. So this is literally cut off the press. And I I think with that in mind, I would hope that Dr. Evan could give us a a brief summary of what's in this, because I know that she spent a lot of time reviewing. But I also think we need to be mindful that she does not necessarily, or we as a district do not necessarily have answers to all the questions that could come up as the committee. So this is going to be our first pass at seeing what's in here. Of course, there can be questions and answers, but there may be more questions than answers. So with that, Dr. Evans, can you walk us through what you'd hope to explain to us today?
Sure, I'd be happy to do that. And I just want to remind the committee, we have a meeting coming up. I think it's July seventh. And so I would expect at that meeting to have some more information for you, although I received this report at about eleven fifteen last night. So I have, I am seeing it at the same time you are. I I believe that at the last meeting, I gave a preview of what I expected the state to tell us, but there are some surprises in this. So I'm going to talk in general about the approach that the state is using to encourage districts' planning efforts to focus towards bringing as many students back as possible as quickly as possible when it is safe to do so. So let me kind of give you just an overview for everyone who might be watching at home who's anxiously awaiting news about whether students will be fully back to school when school opens. The big answer is we don't know. The goal of the D E S E and the governor is to get students back safely, as many of them as possible to in school settings to maximize learning and address their holistic needs. We all recognize that distance learning is not a substitute for our in person education, and it is, we would like nothing better than to bring students back, but it has to be safe to do so. One of the guiding principles behind this twenty eight page plan, and it is only an initial plan, and some elements of it won't be addressed till middle of July, namely transportation and athletics, is to ground their recommendations in the most rigorous use of health and safety data and and take into account everything that we've learned, both from the scientific studies, but from other countries that have brought students back and what the impacts have been. And also a recognition that we need to be nimble and flexible. I'm going to get a T shirt that says, I am flexible and wear it every day between now and the end of August, because I I just want to remind everybody that this is a whole new world. None of us have ever had to plan this way before. We are working really hard to do it well. But it is daunting, to say the least, because the stakes are so high, both educationally and health stakes. So the D E S E is asking us to come up with three possible learning models. One is bringing everybody back to school with distance learning, hand washing, masks, et cetera. And I'll talk through a few of those required components. That's one scenario. The second scenario is what they're calling a hybrid of in person and remote learning. And that is really restricted to districts that for in two, two, two instances, I think. Districts that are not able to bring students back safely because they have thirty three students in a classroom, and they can't socially distance thirty three students safely. So they have to have some students in for part of the week or day and and the rest of their students in another part of the day. I do not believe that is going to be the case for us. Ellen and I spent several days this week visiting with principals in each school. The principals have looked at the square footage of every room, identified all of the available furniture. And Ellen and the principals and I went around and made sure that the number of students we anticipate being in each room does not exceed the guidelines related to social distancing, which have decreased from a minimum of six feet to a minimum of three feet. And so it's our job to match the students to the available spaces and the furniture that they'll be using to make sure that that furniture is organized in such a way that students can socially distance. So the commissioner has asked superintendents to look at a plan for bringing all students back safely and what they would need to make that happen. Now, there are a lot of complexities involved in that that go beyond just furniture and room assignment. It it requires planning for lunches. It requires planning for transportation. It requires planning for moving students from place to place. It requires plans to limit the number of adults in that classroom who come and go. We have very inclusive classrooms where many specialists visit multiple classrooms per day. There are some risks associated with that, mainly that students would be exposed to more adults. We're trying to expose them to as few people as possible. And also a risk to our specialists that they're going to interact with hundreds of students in a way that, you know, that that it could have an impact if they were to become positive patients themselves. And so, you know, there are a lot of complexities involved in this, but what the state is looking for is some indication about whether there's a match between our available square footage in our classrooms, the number of students we have assigned there, available furniture to ensure social distancing, and then all of the other related things around it. So hybrid learning is most likely to happen only if for districts that cannot accommodate all students at the same time. Or if there are students and teachers who need to be quarantined because public health tells us that there's a contact and that they need to be home, even if they're not ill. And so there is an expectation that some students may have distance learning for some period of time. Or some schools may have unexpected distance learning for some period of time. Because there are, there's a spike in the number of cases in town or at that school, and then public health tells us that's missing from this document. We don't have the guidelines around that, what would trigger closure schools. But we need to be prepared for that. And we also need to be prepared for full distance learning for the whole district as we went into that from March till the end of this school year. We just need to do it a little better than we did it. We learned a lot, and there are certainly many aspects of distance learning that having time in the summer to prepare will give us a kind of a head start to be ready for that. And so the three models that we need to submit to the D E S E in August will be informed by our physical constraints, our staffing constraints, and our ability to manage all of those sort of steps to keep everybody healthy, as the commissioner said today in a call to superintendents. This is about the whole package. It's not about any one piece. And you can't implement this without masks and hand washing and social distancing and tailoring your instruction to make sure you support those. So I'll stop there. And take initial questions or comments from committee members.
So thank you so much, Dr. Evans. Are there any questions, sort of, you know, general questions about anything that Dr. Evans said? Ms. Bergstrom.
Um, Dr. Evans, you said that you and Ellen were out in the building during for spaces. I know a lot of our K three spaces don't use traditional desks. They they use the tables that have multiple students sitting at them. How does that factor into how we are considering and measuring spaces? And will that be an additional cost that school committee is going to have to think about incurring before we bring kids back to use? Will we have to go back to more traditional desks in those spaces to meet those guidelines?
So at the elementary level, many of the classrooms have trapezoid tables that get pushed together to make a space for five or six students to work around in a station. Those can be separated and Um and uh we've measured the size of it. Most of the trapezoid tables can accommodate two students on um either end. Um and so um and most of the classrooms have enough trapezoid tables to accommodate the number of students. Some will require some additional tables or desks to be moved in, and we've identified what those classrooms are. Um and um there will have to be other physical changes to some of our elementary classrooms to accommodate all students returning, including. Uh the beloved uh sit on the rug and do morning meeting together will probably have to go. Away at least for the part of the year. Some of the soft spaces and pillows and um those sorts of things that aren't easily cleaned. Will have to go away for the part of the year. Um and some of the uh extra furniture. Um particularly soft upholstered furniture that are that has been put in some of the rooms may have to be um stored for part of the year as well. Uh one of the things we're trying to work with the DBW on is making sure that classrooms are places that can be disinfected and cleaned thoroughly regularly. Um and that isn't always the case if you have things in the classroom that um cannot um. Uh be disinfected easily. And so, you know, so that so that's what we're working on. In terms of additional furniture, we've identified. At three of our elementary schools, a need for an additional um set of um chairs, primarily for spaces where. Um teachers use benches or sit on the floor with the students like in a music class. Um we want to have chairs, because what we're planning to do is mark a permanent space. Not only are students expected to be. Assigned a place, and that will be their place. Um they will uh the place will be assigned in in. In a more scientific way in terms of measurement. And so um in order to be sure that we're socially distanced. Even if we have sort of chairs that can move around, we're going to designate the place that. You know, is three or four feet apart for each of those chairs and and make sure that that works. Um in order to reassure parents that we are following the guidelines, we need to go to every classroom. And configure it in a way that we can ensure that every student who walks in there is not, you know, within three feet of someone else. Um for the time that they're working in that classroom. So um I think so far we've identified. Um several sets of chairs that we need to buy, and Ellen has already done that from FY twenty money or will. Um and we have a surplus of old desks that we store that we can move around from school to school. Um because we encourage tables, we don't teach in desks, using desks, although there are plenty of desks around the district. I was kind of shocked to see. Um how many desks there were and um and some of the flexible furniture that we have will have to be either stored or moved aside a little bit, I think. Um as we kind of get used to the new normal. It's really important to me that students still find school fun and engaging. And they're not just coming in and sitting in rows rigidly. I I can remember when I was in second and third grade. Um I had those desks that were bolted to the floor. Uh and uh that was a lot of fun. So we um. Uh if we're going to move furniture around, we want to be sure that it's um maintained social distance and uh that. Teachers this summer incorporate a variety of movement um with students in in safe, appropriate ways, you know, within the classrooms. That they're not just sitting at a desk all day. Do I know if this, did that answer your question?
It did. So you you feel that we can put two kids at each trapezoidal desk, that that's a three-foot distance?
Most of, yeah, we took a tape measure, we measured it. Most of them, uh that is the case. Uh there are a few trapezoidal desks that are just too small and will only have one person. We also went into art rooms, technology rooms at the. Middle school, at the high school. We measured all the large kind of art tables and. Um what we will do is mark on the tables in all those specialized spaces where students will be um uh able to sit to be socially distanced. Um in tho- in some of those cases, we have to bring additional tables in to make sure that there's. Students are spread out enough, but we have the tables available. Um we also have some hurdles to overcome in language lab and in. Technology labs where it's likely that students can only use every other computer, because the computers are too close together. Um we looked at some bathrooms where we'll have to um move some things around, like paper towels or soap dispensers so that. We can ensure that students are on either side of the sink, so that they're not right next to each other. Sometimes there are three sinks together and we won't use some center sink, those sorts of things. And so. Every space in the building has to be assessed and um we have to start thinking about how do we keep students safe and socially distanced. So we have to be convinced that we can meet all of those um criteria that have been set forth by the state in order to. Um bring all our students back safely. And so that's sort of what the next phase of planning will involve. But not huge costs right now in terms of furniture, and we are extremely fortunate in our favorable class sizes. That for the most part, we can safely bring students back um and still meet the guidelines. Not not six-foot guidelines everywhere, but certainly the three-foot minimum guidelines and still bring all students back.
Thank you.
Ms. Bollniers.
Dr. Evans, you had mentioned that um so or just in terms of timeline submitting the three scenarios. Um at some point in August. Uh do you have any sense for when we would be getting? Uh more specifics from the state and from DESI? And if we do get more specifics, assuming that we get more specifics, will we have enough time submitting in August? To be able to tweak or turn the turn this around in time for September beginning of the school year?
I think that's a great question. One of the things that superintendents have been asking that's not so clear is. Will we be starting school uh on time? Or will there be additional upfront days for teachers and staff members to be trained in um the proper use of PPE or. To be sure all the rooms are configured appropriately or to do distance learning planning or learn instructional methods that. You know, might not be um uh so familiar to them in order to, you know, support. Um active, engaged students in the era of social distancing. So it may be that we uh have a reduced number of school days. The Commissioner has suggested that we could go to one seventy-seven for students and use the additional days for teacher. Um planning, teacher and staff member planning. We don't have anything uh definitive on that at this point. Um and what I would say is um uh some of our um most pressing questions relate to transportation. Um and uh athletics, um and those questions won't be answered um for another few weeks. Once we have those questions answered, I think that we can come up with a reasonable plan that will allow us to open school. But everyone has to recognize that um the course of the illness is completely out of our control. And it could be that spikes in illness mean that we don't open school at all and we are fully distance learned. And so that's a possibility. Um and we're hoping that it's not a probability. So that's why they're asking us to plan for all three contingencies. I think we'll have to plan less for the middle contingency, the hybrid, because I think we'll be able to meet the either everybody comes back. Or everybody's out. Um uh two scenarios are much more likely for us.
Anybody else have any additional questions? Uh Ms. Bergstrom?
By planning for the three scenarios, Dr. Evans, that means three distinct scenarios, correct? That it would be either full-time school, a hybrid model that the entire district would follow. Or a distance learning model that would follow for for the whole district. That that wouldn't mean sort of the um. The community or the parents or individual students would have the choice of which one of those fit their family. Is that correct? Is that what the state is telling us?
That's what I'm thinking right now. I think um I think we'd love to be able to accommodate everybody. Who um has a variety of needs. And certainly there will be some students and perhaps a few faculty members who for medical reasons aren't able to be. Even with social distancing, aren't able to be in school. We've always had those students for a variety of reasons who are either undergoing. Chemotherapy or have um significant medical condition happen, and they get home hospital tutoring. Um but that's not the same as a full and robust um six-plus hour a day program uh that we'll we'll plan to offer. Um students who return to us physically. So what I'm what I really struggle with. In relation to giving people options is um that if we have most students returned to school. I don't have any staff members available to do a robust distance learning program, because all of the staff members are working with the students who are in school. And so districts who um might be considering um allowing some uh families the option of staying home and doing distance learning. I'm not sure where they're going to hire the additional teachers to do the distance learning if. Um the other teachers are engaged with the students. Um you would have to have a lot of people doing distance learning and then reduce the number of class sections. And even then, it's difficult to be sure that you have the right teachers available to support the distance learning. Um uh you know, we might have high school teachers available, but they can't teach first graders to read and so, or vice versa. And so. Um I really struggle with an accurate depiction of what that hybrid looks like. And really, the hybrid looks like only half your kids there at a time, because you can't socially distance and not. Only half your kids there at a time, because um you um you have people who choose that option. And even in a scenario where only half the students are there at a time, I don't have people to teach the half who are not there. Because their teachers are teaching the other half of the class live. And so. You know, there are some folks who've talked about synchronous, you know, videotaping or people watching from home. Um the experience with that uh for public schools has been uh pretty limited and not. Um not easily accomplished. It requires a lot of technical support, requires multiple cameras, it requires sound devices. Requires sign-offs from the parents and teachers for someone to watch them from home. Um it's a very complicated scenario that we're just not set up for, particularly uh two months from now. There's just no way. Um that that's going to happen. So um I know that's going to be disappointing to some people, but I if we're able to. Bring most students back safely, that's the scenario I'm hoping uh we can accomplish.
Ms. Marchant, do you have any? Oh, Ms. Bergstrom, do you have follow-up?
No, I just said thank you.
Okay. Ms. Marchant, do you have any questions? Okay, um Dr. Evans, I something that occurred to me while you were presenting was I know you have teachers. Um working this summer to uh develop distance learning plans. And as you were discussing the social distancing in the classrooms, it occurred to me that many of the lesson plans that we have now. Are designed to be interactive or group-based. Will you be needing to develop lesson plans for socially-distanced? Classroom activities that that are going to, even if we have all the kids there, that the classroom is going to look very different? Um I just so curious, open-ended question about that.
Yeah, no, I think I think it's a great question. When I met with Central Office uh yesterday, they were really excited about the level of enthusiasm. Um for teachers to participate in uh some of the graduate courses. And so. I think there was something like sixty teachers who took the first uh run on the social emotional learning course. Um and another forty or fifty teachers engaged in a differentiated instruction course. So we are fortunate that we have um Central Office um folks like um Pam Gerard, the spend director, and. Lori Kirby, who is a exemplary teacher and principal and is our HR person, but she co-teaches some of these classes. Jason Levine, who's doing the social emotional classes, and Jen, who's really spearheading all of them. Um and uh one of the focus areas is giving teachers the tools they need, both in terms of technology, but cultural literacy. Um and um you know, uh universal design, but not using that template necessarily. Um and then uh a lot of curriculum work this summer by over a hundred teachers to um envision. How does instruction look different if we are focusing on some priority standards? Knowing that we can't cover everything if we're distance learn learning and um how can we mo- most skillfully use technology? Um in ways that keep students engaged, promote collaboration between students, focus on uh projects or performance-based assessments. And so um we are purposefully writing our instruction uh to support both distance learning and the changes that might be required for social distancing. But we're really hoping that this is sort of a temporary thing, because our students really learn very young to. Uh work independently, um to move from station to station, to collaborate with other students, even in the kindergarten classroom. While the teacher's working with a small group, often other students are doing things very independently. Um if students can't move around the classroom, it changes the way you teach. If you can't have other adults in the classroom coming, and I'm rarely in a in an elementary classroom where there isn't some second adult. Working with a small group. Um I don't see a lot of whole group instruction. And so, you know, we're going to change because we have to. We want to do that well, but it's not ideal, and we're hoping to stop doing it as soon as it's. Safe, as soon as it's a vaccine or good treatments, or the medical professionals tell us it's okay to go back to. Um supporting some of the things that we know work so well, like flexible seating, um quiet uh areas for students to. You know, self-regulate or um read or um work with other students. And I don't want our classrooms to be sterile places where students are rigid in a in rows, but um. If that me, if that's the only way to get them back into school, I think um we've got to um be sure we do that well, as well as possible while still supporting your social emotional growth.
Thank you.
Pull up on that real quickly. Um simply, similarly to Brian, are the way that we choose to teach with um project-based learning. And um performance-based assessment um doesn't always, isn't always a smooth puzzle piece to distance. And um part of what we will have to do, as you mentioned, we our goal is to get students back full-time, but. As we watch the news and we see spikes in the virus around the country, we can imagine a scenario in which we might go back to remote learning. At full-time, full-time as well. And I heard you say earlier that we've learned a lot from that. Can you speak just for a moment about? Um also the efforts that um the district is doing to sort of take those lessons that we've learned and and how that is going to play into the plan. That you will be creating for a remote learning plan. I obviously know you're you're not ready to present a remote learning plan, but if you could tell us some kind of some of the things that you'll be thinking about. While you do that.
Sure, I think what we're um, one of the strengths of the district, Jen always says, is that we have great teachers and they have a lot of autonomy and. Can follow multiple pathways to get to the same end. But the downside of the of to a lot of teacher autonomy is you can have inconsistency. Both in content and approach. And distance learning really revealed that, I think, um to a greater extent. And also, it's highly. Um it's inefficient in terms of planning new curriculum if you um if you're planning all of it yourself and you can't collaborate with others to assist with that effort. So one of the things we learned is the power of collaboration. Um we also learned um that we need to be much more explicit about. Um what our platforms are, how we're going to use technology, how we're going to communicate with parents. Um uh what kinds of expectations they can have related to live teaching, whether it's Zoom or. Whether it's office hours or whether it's um other forms of uh communication with students, um and much more consistency with that. Um and while um some teachers were able to do that to a larger extent than others, um it was um. Uh sometimes a product of teachers who weren't as familiar with the technology tools and not as comfortable with using that as a teaching tool. Um and they um uh needed to come up to speed on some other skills. Not everybody was at the same place. So. Um what we're looking for is clarity of expectations, rigor, um uh frequency of contact. Um increasing the frequency of contact uh and accountability, um and figuring out some way to. Give students feedback, which they greatly appreciate, but also hold them accountable um at all levels um as they um progress through distance learning. So I think mo- you know, our teachers really worked hard to stretch themselves and grew from the experience. Um the main complaints I heard um from parents or feedback on the process was. Um some students had more work than others, some students saw their teachers more frequently than others. Um some students. Um uh required a lot of parental assistance, especially at the lower grade levels. That's probably still going to happen. Um and some parents had an expectation that we would be like colleges where there'd be someone lecturing all day. And that's not the way we teach. We don't think that's best practice. And even if we go to distance learning, it's unlikely that we're going to have. Students sitting in front of a computer for more than three hours a day. And so um. Uh you know, I think we have to be very clear when we develop the distance learning plan or the remote learning plan and uh that we talk about. Clarity of expectations and consistency across grade levels and from school to school, especially at the elementary level. Uh you know, between and among the teams at the middle school. and and at the high school. You know, there are a lot of sort of one-off courses that don't have others who do the same thing. But, you know, it's just consistency that of expectation and product. And so some of the planning that Jen is leading this summer will help with that.
Great.
Any other questions for Dr. Evans? Seeing none, thank you so much for this first glance at the initial fall school reopening guidance. And I expect that this will be a topic of conversation at school committee meetings for probably the entire summer and maybe until COVID is not an issue anymore. Hopefully someday. With that, I'd like to move on to the next report and discussion item, which is the draft school committee meeting dates 2021. It's next in the packet. I will actually provide a little background on this. This is, looks at the next three dates that we already had approved for the school committee meeting dates. And then it just progresses forward through the rest of the year, looking at a first and third Tuesday schedule with the first, generally speaking, with the first Tuesday being a nine-thirty a.m. meeting and the third being a six p.m. meeting. But what you'll see is along the way, there are some dates that don't follow that. September first, which is the the day before the first day of school, we've moved to a six p.m. meeting, just so we're not getting in the way of all the work that Dr. Evans and the whole administration will be doing during the day. Later on, in February and April, for April vacation, obviously, we might want to travel. So we have moved that to the usually the fourth week or the week after that would take place. So it's been put in your book here as just draft. Certainly, the one date I would also say is also in question is we have an August eighteenth date at six p.m. If COVID is still the way it is now, many of us won't be traveling. I know at least two of us have travel plans during that time period, and if we're trying to meet in person, that may not work. So I would say that the August eighteenth date is certainly pending what takes place as far as the ability to travel for the summertime. If there are any questions, happy to discuss them. Otherwise, I'm mostly looking for everyone to review the dates and times and see if they fit in. If there's any obvious mistakes, I know I had the entire year wrong on several of the dates when I first submitted it. So this is an improvement on that. Are there any questions about this? Ms. Bergstrom?
We we typically have a meeting, a separate meeting apart from a school committee meeting, that is a meeting with the administrative staff in the district. And I don't see that on this schedule.
That's correct, that is not on the schedule yet. I I think it's probably earlier for us, early for us to find the proper date for that. I think we might have to be closer to the time, given that we don't know whether we'll be in person or not, whether that would be a Zoom meeting or not. It will be something that we'll schedule closer to the time. These are sort of the meetings I could predict days and times, looking out for the whole year. So that is a good point. And it will be, of course, all of these meetings, we know in reality, will move here or there. There'll be snow days, there'll be an additional meeting we need or a meeting that we don't need. Particularly sometimes in December, we have meetings that we don't need. So, good point, thank you. Any other, Ms. Bollinger?
And you probably, you might have just answered this, since you said that we may be adding in meetings here and there as needed or removing them as needed, depending on snow days. But I know that we had talked over the year about, I know that Ms. Marchand, Ms. Marchand had mentioned possibly doing a workshop on facilities so that we can talk about our facilities collectively. And then I believe we've also talked about doing a workshop around just debriefing on superintendent evaluation and what, just how the process went. And I guess that also involves setting or goal-setting for the upcoming year. So I was just wondering about this.
Those are, those are great questions. And we'll have to look at that. They are not envisioned as far as sort of the school committee draft, sort of regularly scheduled meetings. But, get back to you, yes, they will be scheduled.
Perhaps we need to set a separate workshop schedule, Mr. Vinalia, that's apart from the school committee calendars, so that we can move forward with this one?
That makes sense, I agree. The reason, I think you'll notice that there is actually a budget workshop listed in there. And the rationale behind that was that November third is actually election day. So many of our administrators and staff will be doing professional development during the day. And so we moved it to the following week and decided that it might be a good time to do some budget workshop there. But that's the only reason, there is only one workshop listed there, and that was a specific one in place of a regularly scheduled meeting. So I agree, thank you.
I I'm happy to make a motion to, do we need to vote?
This is just, this is just a draft calendar. And we will vote the calendar at the next meeting. And I would hope that everyone would put this into their, whatever their home calendar is and and check to make sure all the dates actually work. Because once we approve this and everybody sort of puts it on their calendar, it's much harder that when someone says, oh, six p.m. on September one doesn't work, because I have something else then. At least it will be in advance, so. So seeing no more questions. We move on to the agenda, we have no action items on the agenda. So that leads us to the chair report, my first chair report. And I would like to start my first chair report by expressing my deep appreciation and gratitude to Michelle Bergstrom, who served for chair as the past year. During her time as chair, she included me as vice chair in almost every decision that was made. And I believe that I will be a stronger chair and a stronger committee member, thanks to her mentorship. And I hope to follow this lead as I move forward. Michelle stewards through a difficult budget season, through school closure during COVID-19, through the launch of student success and well-being committee, and much more. During her tenure, she remained humble, approachable, and willing to learn and grow. And no one worked harder than Michelle. And I will do what I can to live up to the standards she has set. But but please join me first in thanking her for her service as chair over the last year.
Thank you.
Also like to express my my deepest thanks to the administration and the teachers and staff who worked tirelessly over the past three months to provide distance learning to all the children of Winchester, ending just this last Friday. None of us expected the way 2020 would go, but our teachers stepped up when it was needed most. And rest assured, many of them will continue working throughout the summer to prepare for an uncertain fall, as we've been hearing about tonight. I would ask parents, guardians, residents, and students to remain patient and open-minded as the district plans for the fall. I have one issue I'd like to bring up in the chair report, because this has probably been a longer meeting than most of us expected for a quickie meeting scheduled. With reorganization taking place so much later than usual because of the delay in the town election, I'd like us to look at committee assignments as quickly as possible. So in the next few days, I'll be reaching out to each of you and sharing the existing committee assignments and asking for your input and preferences for the 2021 committee assignments. It's my hope, although maybe we won't be able to do this, that we'll be able to finalize assignments by our next meeting so that we can, we're sort of three months behind in doing committee assignments. And obviously, many of the committees will stay the same. But if anybody is moving or committees have changed, we'd like to be able to hit the next year running. So those are my only items I'd like to mention during my chair report. And I would turn it over to the superintendent for superintendent report.
Very briefly, a couple of items of interest. First is, you probably noticed that we have delayed our school bus sign-ups. And Ellen can weigh in on this if if I misspeak. We're doing so because we don't know what transportation will look like next year because of the guidelines. And so if parents are nervous about that, that they've missed something, we haven't sent out our school bus sign-ups yet. Is that right, Ellen? Okay. You're muted, Ellen.
Sorry, we have not sent out any communication to parents regarding school bus transportation passes for the 2021 school year. We are holding off just until we have further information and guidance from DSE, as well as just want to make sure that, you know, we're not opening up registration and then having to make some significant changes after the fact.
Yep. Pam is here in case anyone has any questions about this. But we are planning a robust extended school year program for our students with disabilities who require that as part of their IEPs. It is starting remotely. We hope to transition maybe sometime in August to some in-person learning and also some resumption of testing for students who have missed their testing because of COVID or new or new students who might be stepping forward. So while we are not doing our typical extended school year program in district for July, at least right now, we're getting it started and, you know, all systems go. And Pam, can you just remind us of the dates of that for the, to start?
Yep, we are scheduled to start July sixth and tentatively running through August sixth. But again, as Judy had said, that's the plan, things have been changing, so.
Stay tuned. I am pleased to say that Ellen has worked very hard with Kidsborough to have them open their planned summer childcare camp that is a full-day camp. It's going to be at Ambrose School. They had to work with EEC to follow all of the social distancing guidelines. I think it'll, it's primarily outdoors and some indoors camp. Ellen's worked hard with Kidsborough to identify specified areas, talk with DPW about cleaning, intensive cleaning, expectations around this. They have a very high number of staff members per student planned. And this is going to give us a good opportunity to kind of test out some of the social distancing guidelines before we open for the fall. So happy that Kidsborough is going to offer that for some of our families. They need the childcare for sure. So any questions about the Kidsborough? Seeing none, the last thing I just wanted to make sure, sorry, Brian, did you have one?
Ms. Bergstrom raised her hand.
Oh, sorry.
Information going out to parents? When's that information going out to parents?
Kids, Kidsborough had already done some sign-ups for the summer programming, and they've been in contact with their families, and they will be sending out another communication this evening or tomorrow morning to their families.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, it's primarily for existing Kidsborough families.
Who'd signed up for summer.
Signed up, yeah. The last thing I just want to make sure is that you're all in agreement about the need to add another teacher at Lincoln School for class size. I sent you an email about that, and just want to make sure no one had any questions. It does mean we're going to lose the music room, and the music teacher's going to have to go to the stage again. But Lincoln has had an unprecedented number of enrollments for next year, new enrollments, and unexpectedly, and they pushed a grade level to twenty-three's, and that's just too many. So particularly for social distancing, so we're going to open up another classroom. I think I've said this in the fall, that Lincoln is a school that I'm worried about because the St. Mary's closing, they had a number of students register there. And it just seems as though there's a lot of housing for families, and they, when they move mid-year, it seems to be Lincoln lately. I don't know why, but, so just want to make sure there were no questions about that, and that's all I have. Mr. Chair?
Thank you very much. Moving on to future agendas, we actually have none listed on here, although rest assured, we will have a full and party agenda at our next meeting. Next meeting dates are July seventh at nine-thirty a.m. We'll have need for an executive session at that meeting, so we will talk before then whether the executive session takes place before the nine-thirty meeting or whether we start at nine-thirty and then have a regularly scheduled meeting happen subsequent to that. July twenty-first at six p.m. and August fourth at nine-thirty a.m. There are no additional questions. I would look for a motion.
I'm happy to make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you.
A second.
Second, roll call. Ms. Marchand?
Aye.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Aye.
Ms. Bollinger?
Aye.
Aye as well, thank you very much, good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thank you, likewise.